All right, it is 10 o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. The chair notes that there is a thorn present. We will do the flag salute.
I would begin with one, the United States of America and two republics, which is famous, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 2.0 is additions and revisions to the agenda. Do you guys have anything?
Do you want us to talk about the site review during the announcement?
At the end, okay. That's okay with you?
Yeah.
All right, 3.0 is correspondence and public comments. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Speakers are asked, raise your hands if recognized by the chair. Could you name the address and when the comments to three minutes? Again, for folks who are signing in on your phone, it is star six to unmute yourself. If you are here on the Zoom platform, lower left-hand side of your computer screen. And as our usual reminder, we are very informal here. So as we move through the agenda, if there are questions, comments, want to provide input on any of these items, we welcome that. You have a comment at this point? Catherine?
One, Catherine Griner, 16889 Griner Lane, fossil Oregon, relative of Gillum, resident of Gillum County. Just want to remind you that the bead money is out and I'm just going to keep reminding you about the internet. To rural, as I'm hoping we're still keeping up on that because just got another notice from the governor that the money is available and don't want it to slip away. So we need help from the rural residents or can't necessarily say the city, but.
So is that the, which part of that is available?
It's the first chunk.
For the 20 million?
Yeah, the first chunk of it, I think, is coming in.
80 million to Oregon?
Um.
What do you mean?
I was trying to remember what, there was like an AOC thing that came out a week or two ago that said how much they actually.
Yeah, it's not. It was like the first chunk was like 157 million. Is that right? And then the second chunk is like 900? Is that right?
I think that's what we were thinking it would be, but AOC's numbers were a lot lower than that.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what the actual amount is.
Yeah.
But we can follow up. We were still under the impression that the state's still writing the rules on.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
How to apply.
They're having a conference at the end of the month in Ashland and unfortunately, none of my group can go this time. But anyway, I I just think if we keep in contact with state broadband office, that would be very.
Yeah, we can check in and just see like.
Have you been doing that? Well, have you been going to those?
Off the sour.
I haven't had time to get on any of those more.
Well, and hopefully, the lady emailed this morning because normally they're on the first Friday of the month.
Yeah, I saw that.
And said that they were going to move them through the first Wednesday of the month at 10 o'clock. So.
Which does not work.
Which I think was canceled.
Yeah. So I'm not sure if I'm, and I know there is, there are multiple boards. I mean, German County's meeting, Wheeler County's meeting on Wednesday.
She's getting me some money in Wednesday.
Yeah, so I kind of, we may need to collectively, maybe AOC needs to push back and say, that's really not a good time for county commissioners to be participating, but.
Wow.
Cause yeah, I saw that this morning. Like, that's really not helpful. But we won't make a single one of those because we're sitting here at this table. So, but we will look into it a little bit more.
And so if I can have one more, this is as Catherine Griner at 128 South Main Street. If I can talk to you, unfortunately, I have a Simmons Court appointment at 11, but if we get to your discussion about north of the new bus barn, I have some information in the place to discuss with you too.
I think we'll get there.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure that.
I'm guessing.
Okay, thank you.
Um, okay. Uh, under correspondence, let me just go fairly quick. There are a couple of items. First is a letter from Jennifer Gunter. She's over in Lasco County, but we are putting this in here. We actually received a couple of these and they're all sort of standardized language. The subject matter is, I do not consent to the use of election machines. So that is just in there for people's. They're interested that members of the court received it, so we stuck it in correspondence. And we've received more than one of them. So let this just be for, we've, we've heard, we've heard that, we've gotten a letter. Let's see. And folks who want to read it, that is available on the court's website. And then the other thing was just an FYI, we already mentioned it during the last meeting. But this is the letter that came in from ODOT regarding the EV charging grant that Miranda landed. And letting us know that $812,000 was granted towards the chargers that will, the EV chargers that will go behind the library. And so anybody's curious about that, that is also in there. Miranda and I are chasing grants on the park side to see if we can find some money on the green space. And then I think most likely the sidewalk itself will probably be something that the county will need to come up with behind. So that's the status of that project. We want to come next year. And I think we can move into consent agenda.
I have, can I?
Sure.
I just want you guys to know, my deputy clerk's, it's tiring as a general one. I'm ready to hire. I have budgeted funds. Just let me know.
Okay. Um. Commissioners, we're onto consent agenda.
Um, okay, with the consent agenda.
Okay, Julia?
Yeah, I moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of October bills pending review. Consider approval of IGA with City of Condon for Condon Community Swimming Pool Funding. Consider approval of 2023 Board of Property Tax Appeals IGA with Sherman County. Consider approval of 2023 Board of Property Tax Appeals IGA with Morrow County. Consider approval of Amendment Number Two to IGA Number 180008 with Oregon Health Authority. Consider approval of HRTG Grant Number VS-0213 with Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. Consider appointment of Commissioner Shannon and Watkins as Bank of Eastern Oregon Account Signers. And consider appointment of Rachel Boyer as County Credit Card Program Administrator. Is there further discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
On which bank accounts? As a bank issue, that is very specific. Just the AP and the payroll account?
That would be my assumption.
So, yeah. So, I mean, the motion banks and have to have the account. They're moving in. That's all.
Okay.
Because, I mean, we're, we're trusting, we have trust accounts and all kinds of, you know.
So.
Need to be more specific in the consent agenda, which counts for talking now? For the bank?
I think we can modify the motion if you guys would like to note those specifically, or Miranda can include in the motion the discussion about which accounts we need and have those in there as well.
Is there some payroll that is hand or is it all electronically?
No, there are hand checks. Specifically, this is for the account ending in 65 and 68 payroll and these are in accounts so that in case of, um.
I would think since it's in the consent agenda, we need to be specific about what accounts we're talking about.
The only other caution I have is if you, this also be proven AP or anything, you might sign a check.
That's why, that's why I'm not on it. Yeah.
And then the final one is you can't sign a check. You're, you know, if you have any reimbursement, you tell yourself you can't find them, but it's just, you probably where I just will make sure everybody knows.
Basically.
It's always a good practice not to.
That policy regulation, whatever it is, I wouldn't be able to sign the road department checks. Is that correct?
You would not be able to sign a check for any of your family members or yourself. So you would be able to sign checks for other roots, expenses that are going out, anything for Jolie, for instance, would have to be signed by Leah or Nathan or Ellen.
What did you say?
If you approve it, you can't sign it. So if you approve the road department's AP and the judge has not approved it, it gets paid, you couldn't sign a check at every time, but that's just accounting.
I mean, we're doing a double look at that regardless.
Yeah, so all of the road AP now is getting squished in with the, with the rest of the AP. And so those are all part of the ones that I'm signing and giving to Rachel. So there's a second check.
I just wanted to, I just want to make sure you, everybody's on the same page before you had any issue with it. I was like, hey, you guys were just random.
Yeah.
No, good point.
Yeah. So to clarify, in the motion, then it would be the accounts ending in 65 and 68, as you said. Um, are you guys okay with that modification?
Bank EO accounts or not?
Okay, so to restate, it would be consider appointment of Commissioner Shannon and Watkins to Bank of Eastern Oregon as Bank of Eastern Oregon Account Signers for the accounts ending in 65 and 68. So we'll just want to capture that in the minutes. Um, is there further discussion?
Um, I don't know if this is the place for, but in road department and approval, as I am going through those, that check is really important because I have found some things that well, Rachel had found checks that have been miscoded and I started looking closer at that and found something in the last AP that had been miscoded too. So.
Yeah.
Throw that out there.
Yeah.
None of this process bypassed the door check or loses check. In fact, now there's two that bypasses, which is, I think, you know, great. And just kind of need to hire an attorney.
Um, any further discussion? All those in paper?
So do I need to say, move to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Yes.
Okay. I'm moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Oh, second.
Okay. Um, we just went over what those amendments are, so I will say, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Um, under six, we don't have any unfinished business. So under 6.1 is consider approval of 2023, 2025 Gillum Wheeler Corrections Plan. Tina is here. And this is just a, uh, so this is something we do every biennium anyway, because we had a shorter agenda, we opted to ask Tina to come see us, just in case you guys had any questions. And the lipstick already met and looked over it and approved it. So this is just kind of the regular step process, but Tina, do you want to kind of walk us through any changes, anything you want to note about caseload or anything else you find pertinent you want to say for the record?
As far as the plan goes, I'm okay back here, right?
Yep, absolutely.
As far as the plan goes, it's really the same plan that we've had. We haven't added or taken away any programs or services. The only thing is, our caseload is down from previous bienniums. But there are no other changes to plans. Do you guys have any questions?
What did you say was down?
Our case, my caseload is down for Gillum County. Currently, my caseload is 29 in Gillum County.
So why is it down?
Well, I believe it went down after COVID. And Measure 110. So those were the reasons.
Some of our discussion.
Yep. Well, just to point out, I'm at 29 right now and when we moved our office over during 21, the Gillum County caseload was 42. I didn't realize it was such a difference until I looked this morning.
You know, when I was in AOC Monday and one of the things coming from the other counties and they're, they're unable to continue with drug courts, because there's none of people in the pipeline to pay for them or, I mean, they're, they're not there because of Measure 110.
A lot of drug courts are going away across the state.
Yes. Unreal. Something that they really need right now.
It is. It's hard to get people into treatment right now. I have someone that just had a relapse and needed an appointment and their appointment is in November.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. So do you guys have any questions on any of the programs of the offer? Basically, this plan informs the state how we're going to spend, if we're going to need to provide us. And then the IGA that will need to be signed between the state by the county is the rules that we have to follow in order to get the grant a plan. And I did email that to them.
I have it on the agenda for the 18th meeting.
Yes. And I figured it would be done. And then the only other thing I would point out regarding this plan is the money that we get from the state can only be spent on felony supervision. Luckily, we have carryover funds from when we used to be able to collect supervision fees and that's the money that you see in the budget for misdemeanor supervision, for treatment services and things like that. We need that carryover.
Was that funding that just went away because of the state?
We used to collect supervision fees and that went away during COVID, right after COVID. We no longer can collect supervision fees from people on supervision. And that was the money that we used for supervision of misdemeanors because we do not get any general fund money for that. But we do have some carryover that will get us by for a while. We really don't have that many miscreants anymore.
Doesn't look like very much carryover.
Well, that's not all of the carryover we have. That's the amount that we are budgeting to use. Currently, I only have four misdemeanors in Gillum County that are unfunded, so it's not very many.
Any questions for Tina? Any members of the public have questions for Tina? If not, there is a, there's motion language in your packets to approve the corrections plan, which the lipstick did already review and already voted to approve, so.
So we need the motion?
I need a, yeah, I need a motion.
2023 dash 2025 Gillum Wheeler Corrections Plan.
Well, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved the 2023 to 2025 Gillum Wheeler Corrections Plan. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Right.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thanks for coming, Tina. Making the time. I told you it would be like five minutes.
All right, yeah.
Okay, 6.2 is consider approval of zoning and land development ordinance text amendment application for bus barn project. So let me just, Jeff's here, Catherine wants to speak on this too. Let me just, and Michelle's in the back. Let me just sort of set the stage that Jeff and Michelle were taking a look at what would be needed to get the bus barn permitted to go through planning. And there is an issue with setbacks. So the way that we had originally wanted the bus barn to be oriented, the size of the lot means that we can't do that and have the current setbacks. And so we're discussing possibly ask or directing Michelle to put an application in to do a text amendment that would modify some of those setbacks so that the bus barn can move forward in its current location, current orientation, basically. However, Catherine also reached out earlier this week to ask if we, given that we're going to have to go through a planning process, if we might want to consider just doing an annexation into the city. So that's kind of the, the broad strokes thing. And so maybe who, who, who would like to start? Do do Michelle or Jeff want to talk about why this is even on? And then maybe Catherine can go into the annex option.
Maybe come up there and we'll just speak from there.
Um, if you, could you talk and let me see if the Zoom will catch you?
Okay, I'll talk.
Yep.
In, yes.
Okay, so some background on this. The lot north of the fairgrounds lot, which is part of the fairgrounds technically, is outside of the city limits, but inside of urban growth boundary right now. And the lot dimension in the north-south direction is about 147 feet. So when we started the project, we had talked about either doing annexation or trying to do it in town. And at the time, there was two reasons when we talked about doing the annexation. One was, I was concerned that was EFU, exclusive farm use, which would preclude the development on there. And it turned out that it is not EFU, it's called urban growth.
Area.
Area content. So you need one. And actually, the text wasn't in the planning in the development code until recently. So and so this, the proposed use would actually fit within that. And then the other part of it was, it was sewer connection because technically if you're not in the city, you can't connect a public sewer. So on the public sewer side of it, we kind of have two options. One is to do onsite disposal, which, I mean, the sewer commands are quite low. The other would be to connect to the city system. If we're going to connect to the city system, if I was going to do it, we would have to ultimately connect kind of down in front of Thomas House at the South in the Berks Park. I had hoped that we could put a public sewer in a private easement, excuse me. A public sewer, a public even across private property, even though it's, it's owned by the county. Which is not a common major jurisdiction to do that. See, Condon has apparently a policy insistence, we have to run it down cottonwood and then run it down Highway 19 to tie into, I think, a manhole at the South in the Berks Park, which is quite a lot. Furthermore, and I can't tell you how far it is, but I it's, I think it's between 500 and 1,000 feet. It was going to be a fairly significant cost side after that. And if we ran it through Berks Park, it would be a little bit shorter, but we wouldn't be in the ODOT right away. She's the one that did that in life. Boy, so. We found that the proposed use fits in the UGA to see county zoning ordinance. And we can do, I think, onsite disposal. We don't have the tool today. I bet you can. We worked with the county court to try to develop an orientation which has the new bus barn facing cottonwood or facing the fairgrounds. The front of the building faces the street. But the building's fairly long. It's 112 feet long and the lot's only 147 feet deep. And I believe, I don't remember the offsets right now, the setbacks technical term. Uh, but I think they're 25 feet on the back and, I'm sure the north side, and 30 feet on the front, which was 45 feet. Anyway, David, is that right?
Uh, 20 on the front and, or 30 on the front, 20 on the back.
30, so that's 50 feet. Well, so the building overlaps it.
So the steel, the steel that you've got in here shows maybe it's not fucking the same orange and orange here, but 15 front, 30 back, proposed is 15. Front setback, side setbacks, 10 and 20.
Right.
And the rear is 5 and 30.
Right, five. So what we propose to do is change the zoning ordinance so we're magically closer to R1 ordinance of the, if it gets annexed into the city, it'll be R1. Um, and, and the setbacks for that, I think, are 15 from the street and five on the back. And I propose that adjacent EFU, you would have a larger setback because this zone amendment would change more than just this project. It would also change development on the north part and on the east part of town because this zone applies more to one area or huge, you'd kind of out beyond the city. So what we're proposing to do is a zone text amendment that reduces the offsets so that, and specifically for this project, it makes the building fit better on it. And I think for what we're doing and for revenue around the city content, it's a legitimate way to do it because ultimately, if you did it in a, we have similar setbacks that against annexing the city content. If it got, the other way we could do it would be to annex it into the city of Condon and then we would probably have to do a conditional use application or a zone change or probably a conditional use application, make use fit the zoning requirements in the city of Condon. So the most straightforward way from my perspective to do this, and since the county can control this, is to just adjust the offsets so that we, that makes sense for this building and some future buildings. We build the building under the, in the county, we do an onsite disposal system for it. And then, and I think we could do an onsite disposal in the city as well because we're far enough where it's sewer. We do an onsite disposals that come for it. And then this doesn't preclude future annexation of the city either. If there was another project that made sense to annex in the city, to annex in the city, I just don't think we need to do those steps right now. And I think we can do it at the county. So that's my request.
You, you lost me on, it would come in as R1?
You come in, so the way that it's set up right then.
An residential?
It comes in, it's the way that it was set up, at least on the city zoning law, if that land would come in as R1, so.
Which the building would be questionable whether it'd be allowed in an R1, so.
It would be, I think it would be allowed as conditional use in R1, because it's a oh, I think there's a parade, I can't remember what the language is, but it's a public or semi-public building. I think this would probably fit that, or you would have to maybe rezone it if, if the decision was made in the town, although I think you could do it in the issue. Whereas if we do it in the county, it's just an industry, a shell. So that's, that's why we're doing what we're doing and why that proposal is.
And to clarify, this is not the actual planning decision. So this is, maybe Michelle, you could walk through, like, say, the court opts to go down this route. This is basically authorizing you to put in the, to start the application process and get it moving through the planning process. So it'll have to go. Can you kind of walk through just in broad strokes, like what that looks like if the court decides to go this direction?
I'll give it a go.
Um, that might be helpful. I don't know if it'll catch you clear back there.
So before we go too far, one other question. What was the reason we can't run sewer the most direct route to get city sewer?
So, so typically you're supposed to run your sewer in the public driveway, right? And, and if you run it, a public sewer or private property, what you're supposed to do is you put it in an easement. And that easement does a couple of things. Language in the easement typically says, hey, person owning the property, you can typically put parking lot landscaping over it, but you can't put a building over it. And by the way, if you have a problem, we get to go in and fix it. So you don't get to keep us out if we have a problem with the sewer line, but we have to go in and fix it. So there's some language, pretty standardized language in most jurisdictions about that. And then typically it's a 15-foot or 20-foot wide path that runs through it. Depends on the size of the line, but this would typically be a 15 or 15-foot wide space if we did it.
And the city doesn't allow that.
I wouldn't say they out and out don't allow it, but it's certainly, my communication with them is it's certainly something that they, they indicated to me that they would prefer us, that we went down Cottonwood Street and then the Highway 19.
Well, I'm sure they would. I understand that.
Well, to some extent, I'm like, okay, that's fine. But if anything goes wrong, if it's me, I'd rather work at Berks Park than I would on Highway 19. But.
Yeah, where it's county that it's going through, it's like.
But. Right.
Common sense evades us most of the time, especially with conditional use.
Well, you know, and I mean, there's, there's some, there's some management that goes without the public easements. I mean, in fairness, you have, somebody has to be aware of whatever building permit comes in. If somebody said, hey, we're going to the building from the top of it, so we've got to go out. You're not, because there's public easement process. So you know, there's, there's two sides to that. But it would shorten it and would keep the development on private property. That's true. I think things is somewhat easier.
Hey. I think we considered the other part though, because it's going to be considerably cheaper to, and there's not going to be that much.
Considerably cheaper to go onsite.
To do onsite.
And you're not going to have the use. Like what, a couple toilets and maybe a sink and.
Right, we're talking about.
Talking about a kitchen and.
Right, a smaller, smaller than, you know, smaller residential. So the way that the state of Oregon is kind of a sidetrack, but most of the time you figure 15 gallons per day of car employed for still isn't enough to have showers. Well, if we say that we have, even if you have three employees up there, that's 45 gallons per day. Most residential systems are set for 450 gallons per day. So it's apparently small. And there would be some expanded, if we build a way, think we would build it, which would probably be up to 400, 500 gallons a day. Um, I think you could have 30 employees. If you put another building, theoretically, we'd use that same rate.
Good.
Michelle, do you want to just?
I'm asking you now.
Touch high level. I'll try to keep it high level. Planning process. So, um, like Jeff mentioned earlier, it's in the urban growth boundary. It is outside of the city limits. And so planning jurisdiction, so for the land use permit for this building, it has to go through the Gillum County Planning Department. We coordinate with the City of Condon. We have an agreement. And so they do review any of it. Long story, like Jeff alluded to, it was originally believed it was zoned exclusive farm use. Through a very lengthy process, discovered it's.
Through a very lengthy process, discovered it's not. So that helps in that we don't have to. The county can permit it easier because now it's in a zone that allows this use. However, after the orientation and meeting with Jeff, once we figured out it fits in the zone that the county has, the orientation and everything does not fit setbacks. Setbacks cannot be changed administratively. In fact, anything in the Gillum County zoning ordinance cannot be changed administratively. It has to be done through a public process that involves a minimum of two public hearings, one before the planning commission and one before the county court. I mean, even though we're talking about setbacks, it still has to go through the public process of a little minimum of two public hearings. And so that's why we're here today. If the county court wants to keep going down the path of the same orientation and keep it under the immediate planning of Gillum County for zoning permitting, then we have to change. We have to propose a change to the text amendment for this specific zone, which refers to the setbacks. Because otherwise it can't, and I can't, I can't do a variance, we've already researched that, it can't happen, it doesn't fit. So we have to, to move forward with keeping it under Gillum County planning. We have to do a text amendment. Which, just so that everyone's aware, I mean, whether we're doing it just the setbacks or if we're considering the whole zone. Because of the two hearings and then there's notice that you have to give to the Department of Land and Conservation. Looking at the earliest March, April that this would be wrapped up. Just for the planning. I mean, I don't foresee that there'd be any stumbling blocks as far as reviewing the setbacks, but once you open that code section, you open it in a public process so there could be other feedback that could come in. And then we would consider that could delay it or, you know, make it a little lengthier process. But I just want to give everyone, let the court know that even if the decision is made to move forward today, I still have to get through a timeline and adhere to the specifics of the Department of Land Use and Conservation, as I have to. And I'm looking at March, April at the earliest to get it moving forward. And then again, why we're here today is any text amendments to the Gillum County planning ordinance can either be done by the planning commission at the direction of the planning commission, at the direction of the Gillum County Court, or landowner. And in this particular situation, Gillum County Court is the landowner and the county court themselves. So that you guys can provide the direction to myself, my department, to move forward with the process.
Can you also speak to, I think Jeff alluded that there may be this zone maybe in other parts of town?
In the urban growth boundary.
Right.
Correct.
So like where specifically, so the court members know, like, this is, we're doing this in response to our project, but there are other parts in town that will also potentially be impacted. So it may be like, because I'm thinking about, okay, well, who's our neighbors where we currently are? It's basically just us, but. Okay, so for, but there may be neighbors in other parts of town who want to weigh in.
So for Condon, the urban growth boundary extends, I would say ninety-nine percent all the way around the perimeter of city of Condon. And where the like one percent is done as addition to the city of Condon. That is no longer in the urban growth boundary, that was removed back in two thousand and eight. And the county court has since dealt with that matter under county jurisdiction. So all this yellow that you see here is the urban growth boundary. So planning, anybody that's coming in for a permit has to come through the Gillum County Planning Department. There are two zones, it's the UGAC and then C one. And C one means you can have livestock, and the livestock, I believe, is all in the south and west, south and west where livestock is, and the rest of it is no livestock allowed.
So would this, this would just touch the C, not also the C one, or would it be doing both?
We would just be doing the C.
Just the C, okay.
Which is north and east around the perimeter of city of Condon.
So that one, the one take would be to orient it a different direction?
Yeah, we could do that. So if we did that, it wouldn't be basically three. And then for some of the fairground development, particularly with the the. We're talking about putting a parking over on the other side of the street. And it works out nicely in the way it's oriented to have some of the clear yards required in front of the doors for a practical purpose to overlap with some of the gardens. So making that more economical on the, on the side of it. And I think it's, in the end, I think it's more efficient use of land if you do it that way. In terms of, I mean, at the end of the day, it's not a huge difference, but when you start looking at this building plus the parking, you're, you have less square footage being made impervious or semi-impervious to this and leaving more space available for future development. And I think there is something to be said for having the front of the building face the street. Not a huge issue, we're functioning either way, the fairgrounds is a street, but, but I think it does make sense in general to have it front of your building.
Yeah. So, but if we pull the trigger, then you can get the bulb rolling and we'd be looking at May or March or April.
Yeah, so is there any way to expedite that side of it? I mean, that's.
Yeah.
On this?
Yeah, go ahead. So that, because there's also the annexation.
Jeff talked with GIV, Public Works, and also too, yes, a septic system is allowable since it is further away. So, and the reason this is one of it is the city cannot allow sewer outside of city limits. So the only way that this could be connected to by a sewer line is if this piece of property annexed in. So if it annexed in, so what, how this all came up, and I do not have a dog in this side, okay? It's, it's, it's you guys' property. What I need you to know is the city rules. So the city rule is, is that A, you cannot have sewer unless you're annexed in. So Michelle reached out to me about this a week ago, and I did have a chance to talk to her, kind of, Kirk Fadlin. If we annexed it in, and I do not know why, when we did the UGB, that this is all on. Because it also includes the cemetery, which is the quietest subdivision we had in town. But.
Permanent, permanent living, I think.
So on the sewer, we've got that straight. So on the water, we, we can allow out of town people to have water, but the city has the right to require the landowner to sign an annexation agreement. And if we want you to annex in, we can have you annex in at any time. Have we done that yet? No. But this property, what I'm looking at is what is R one? Is talking with Kirk, is we would go through the process, annex this property in, annex, change the zone, rezone it to public open space. So you do not have to meet in setbacks. And he thinks the process could take two to four months. So if we started the process now, we could be done by January. And also too, is I want the county to be aware that some of the last few buildings that we've approved in the city of Condon, Gillum County Soil and Water Conservation, the daycare, even possibly the school district, has been under built. So at some point, then you want to put maybe the cop shop by the bus barn or have an annexation of the county, you will have, already have its zone, you will already be ready to go with being allowed to have sewer and water, because you're already annexed in for that. So on the water too, not only the annexation, if the city runs low on water and we got close this summer, we had to shut off some of the main irrigators. And so everyone knows our golf course has two wells, it's not just irrigated by city water. So we shut down, we told people to start conserving. But if we have to shut off water, the out of town people will be shut off first, which will be this, if it's not annexed in to go off. Has that happened since the twenty years I've been at the city? Not once. But you need to be aware of what the consequences are. So whether you decide to do a text amendment and go in April or May, or go with an annexation and rezone it and be done possibly two months earlier, that's up to you guys. Again, you can still have a septic, you're more than three hundred feet away from the city sewer system, so you can go ahead and put a septic. And at some point, if you want to run a line out there because you're extending and you're going to rebuild even more buildings. And also too, you might want to upgrade the sewer within the Gillum County Fairgrounds compound, that might be an option too. Also too, is, I know Jeff's point of view of working with ODOT, he gets it, understands it. But we already have multiple lines in, they're right of way. And so far, they've been decent partners on, on that. So that's, I'm just throwing that out again. I don't have a dog in this side, whatever you guys want to do, that's fine. But you just need to know the consequences of the water in the sewer on, on the city side, which is law and ordinance.
So on the downside, the annex and annex cost?
What's, you're not paying that.
I don't think, I mean, as, as long as we can do the, as long as we can do the onsite disposal, which I think is very, I don't think it, I don't think it changes the costs in any way. Michelle, I am a little bit, I guess I have a question. Why you think it's going to be captured equally? Of this own text amendment, because we've done some text amendments before, it's been a while since I've done them. And they typically go about as fast as annexations go.
That is just based on if we stay with the regular scheduled meetings. I can schedule special meetings, so I was going to say that when Catherine said that. It doesn't preclude that the process can happen faster, but that is just based on the regular scheduled meeting for the county court, the regular scheduled meeting for the planning commission, which is once a month, the last Thursday of, or last Tuesday of the month. But we could schedule a special one. I mean, I just have to involve, get consensus.
So if it went to this month's planning commission, you think it could?
It can't.
Why not?
Because you have to get thirty days, thirty-five, thirty-five days' notice, it has to be before the first hearing.
Okay, so I guess the November, and then how much space do you have between that and second meeting? So if we go as planning commission in November, then the court means that December at least once, right?
Yes.
Then it's the second hearing, right?
Yes.
I'm just walking through this. Then there's a appeal period, right? Fifteen days or five days. So, but that's sealed the annexation, that doesn't seem like you plan.
Correct.
So, I mean, I could take a month or three, but it could go faster.
It could go faster.
Yeah.
Okay, so commissioners, you have, you have three options laid before you. I'm just going to summarize them, and then you can tell me which direction you wanted, you're leaning towards. So option one is to change the orientation of the building, leave it as it's currently zoned, have Michelle approve it through, she can do it administratively if it needs the setbacks. That's changing the bill. Option two is to pursue a text amendment, leave it in Gillum, in, in Gillum County's authority for planning. Go through the text amendment process, which could take three to six-ish months, depending on meetings and when everybody can get together. Option three is to pursue an annexation into the city and work with not only the annexation, but also rezoning of that area to make sure that it would be an outright allowable use. Those are the three options. Are there any of those that are absolute no's? Okay, so orientation is off the table.
I think we get into, we're going to get into a bunch more engineering costs to put you down that road.
Well, I also think, I do think like you want your community to also look a certain way and I think having it face the road and, you know, just, yeah. Um, okay, so options are text amendment, keep it in the county.
I like the annexation, but.
I honestly could go either way. I see the benefits of either. So.
We'll get the building built and work it together.
Yes. Is there, Leah, question? Because this is also fair board property. I mean, it's county property, but the fair board also is the primary user of it. Has the fair board had any discussions about annexation versus not?
No.
Okay.
They have not. And I would not want to speak on their behalf.
You would not what?
I would not want to speak on their behalf.
Two of them are downstairs.
I know.
That's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
You're getting wise.
Five very opinionated people on there, so it would be a good idea to discuss it with them.
So Pat, do you want to speak to just briefly? You said of the two, the annexation is, is at least your preferred. What's your, what's your thought process behind that?
Well, some of what Catherine said about potential problems down the road would be concerned. I mean, water is water, and water's an issue everywhere, and when could that be a problem, you know? And then, I, it just seems cleaner to me. You know, a cleaner process to get to a legitimate zone place.
Well, then, then the other thing to consider is if we do go ahead and have that language changed, then it fixes it for other potential projects that might happen in other areas, but won't be looking at such severe setbacks.
So there you go, my opinion.
So Leah, are you leaning towards the text amendment? Based on that, or are you leaning towards the annexation?
I would say yes, just for the, I, it sounds like that we could probably expedite it if we can. I'm looking at Michelle and she's back there going. So i- if it does take till March or April, is, does that hold up the whole project or?
Yeah, I think it would. I mean, ideally, that project was going to have a problem about that timeframe. So the, the issue is, I think, the issue is that we really can't apply for building permits until we establish the zone and we establish that the use of permitting will help. So if we do the text amendment, we can go, as soon as, as soon as that's adopted, then we can turn plans to the planning department. She can look at it, make sure that it is administratively reviewed, applied to the development ordinance, and then those plans can go on to ordment. We get a building permit. But until we have planning approval, we can't go get a building permit. So it does impact it. You know, I think time-wise, I think either one of them is going to take probably, we're in October now, it's probably going to take three or four months, either one, because it sounds like with the city, we're still going to have a public process because we would either do a conditional use or, and I agree with Catherine, it actually makes sense that we were going to do it for that, but it takes a lot to zone in as open space, because that's what the fairgrounds is on. And I think, I think that use is permitted in the LS zone. I'm not absolutely certain of that, but I'm pretty sure that almost any public use is permitted in the LS. So you're going to have to go through a rezoning process with that, which is correctly, wrong, effectively the same process as a text amendment, right? So either one, that you do that, you're going to have three or four months. But if we can get a building permit in February, yeah, that's fine. I'm comfortable going, we have a good sense that we're going to do that, I'm comfortable going out for bid based on that, because I'd like to get those apps sooner rather than later. It's, there's a number of pieces moving around and that's the one that I, it would be useful for me to know which way we're going to go and then keep the building orientation the way that it is, because it affects the way that I design the plant. As far as your comment about changing the engineering, not a significant cost. I mean, we've got it pretty well laid out the way that it is, but we can rotate it pretty quickly. But I really would be right, I think it makes more sense to keep it the way that it is, so. Either way, we do it, I think we're going to go through the zone a lot.
Like the hardest decision of the year.
The other thing that I would add, you know, the city, this doesn't preclude annexing in the future.
Yeah.
Doing the text amendment does not preclude annex in the future. Does not preclude, like I believe Catherine said, that when you sign up for the water, you can get annexed if the city's win. So probably out of it, but, but the, but you're, you're going to be, you're going to be available for annex when you sign up for the water. So, you know, at the end of the day, it's, I think, changing the text amendment probably in the end gives expedite thing a little bit, because I think there's one last step, because you don't have the annexation stuff. But either one of them works.
I'm with you, I don't. Good lord.
I do, I do like, and I had not thought of, but I appreciated Leah's comments on that if, if this is, if. So part of the conversation we just had was, you know, this may eventually be annexed in regardless. We also may at some point have somebody who's in UGBC who says setbacks are great, can you do something about this? Where we're being asked to do that any. Where we're being asked to do that anyway, to fix something, because only a donor is trying to do something that they. Just doesn't make, like, they can't get it to fit. Um, so I. And I think Leah had brought up, like, then we could fix it for the rest of that zone.
Yeah.
Since we have to do it for, we would have to do it for the project anyway, so I, I mean.
That would be all of.
I'm not sure that there's a bad decision, I think either.
Keep in mind that if those people in U D B are changed with setbacks, they're also gonna be asking for water, I guess.
Yeah.
And they will also be having to sign an annexation agreement.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's like Jeff said, it's either now or possible later.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the issue, is we may have the annex, again, it's now, but you may have to. And there's no tax consequence, you're.
Okay, commissioners, if you, so here's the thing, if you want to do a text amendment, there's suggested motion language in your packet. If you want to do an annexation, I think we just need to direct Jeff that that's the direction we're gonna go, and then there'll be paperwork on the city side to get that processed though. So that can just be done as a, this is the consensus, let's move forward with an annexation, so.
Yep. That's right.
So need to know which direction, if there's a motion or if there's a direction to Jeff to annex.
I'm.
You're the one.
I'm out of my.
You're the one who likes it.
I'll leave, crushes off.
Thank you, Catherine.
Well, I think everything considered, maybe that's. Text amendment is the way to go. So I moved to authorize planning staff to submit an application to propose text amendments to Gillum County zoning and land development ordinance. Specifically to Article Four and Article Eight and any other applicable or associated sections as necessary and as rapidly as possible.
Was that added on to that?
We did add that.
I'll second it.
So it moved and seconded that we authorize the planning staff to submit an application to propose text amendments to the Gillum County zoning and land development, development ordinance. Specifically to Article Four and Article Eight and any other applicable or associated sections as necessary and as quickly as possible. Uh, all, any further discussion? All this in favor?
I.
I.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, now I finally got it back, Catherine.
Okay.
So hurry, Michelle.
Off. She's, she's going right now.
I, I heard the direction.
She's on her way.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, so. That is all that we had there. Let's move into, I'm just kind of resetting here. Uh, we're into announcements and next meeting, so next meeting will be October eighteenth, that one will be in Arlington at the Gronkis Building. We are also planning in the afternoon to have the next quarterly, we're gonna get back on the quarters, uh, meeting between all of the various uh public partners, but especially with the court. Um, to do a joint work session and talk about hot topics and joint projects we're working on, so we will have. Obviously notices going out for both meetings, but if you're interested in tuning in, those will be over Zoom as well. Um. Pat, what do you have going on?
Um, well, we had, last Thursday was, last Thursday before last was a little crazy, and anyway, I. I had an O R Cor meeting that day, board meeting, and M K Ed board meeting, and. I attended, from my cell phone speaker, the road advisory meeting. Um. And kind of planned some things out for, picture for the road department. Uh, we had the SIP agreement presentation with Mike MacArthur in Arlington last week, and. Thursday, I attended the um district tree advocacy meeting in Morham. And was elected as a vice chair or alternate, whichever, but I see it listed as both, so I don't know which is correct. And uh, I went, I did get online for the L G A C meeting last Friday, and Monday I was in Salem. For uh, Health and Human Services Summit on. Behavioral health. And second item, fixing ballot measure one ten, which is really hard to talk about. Behavior health in Oregon without talking about ballot measure one ten. So it kept creeping into the first discussion, and then we ended up, and. Um, one of the requests from that, and I talked to the sheriff's department this morning, and talked to, talked to corrections, and I think in our. Um proclamation, we pretty well have the thoughts of. Public mental health in that proclamation, that process has been, you probably need to talk to the DA and get some input in by Friday, because. Legislation is now, legislators are now working on methods to what they think is the fix in measure one ten.
Mm-hmm.
And um A O C, and I shouldn't say A O C as much as interested counties, which I think are all of them. There's nobody that doesn't think it requires some fixes.
Mm-hmm.
And um, the concern is that they don't write legislation that has to be fixed. To fix measure one oh ten, or one ten, so we're trying to expedite. Um, information so we can give the lobbyists some direction from all the counties in the state and what those fixtures should be, and the interesting thing for me is. And I got a lot of input, I got to do a lot of input on, on Monday afternoons meeting, because nobody understands recovery. And that's the biggest part of the whole, this whole thing is not understanding recovery and how it works. And I have some, there, there's at least four meetings through the summit process that. Health and Human Services will go through, and I've got some ideas, got how to try to get that a little deeper in the conversation, it's always talk about. What we need for treatment and recovery, but nobody's really testifying how that should work in an effective way, and. I guess my concern is we just throw a lot of money at spending up recovery that is ineffective, and we might as well throw it a rug. Or state highways, D O T and their choice is to do that, so. Um, heavily involved in that process, and if we can. Like, get some information from the county entities to, to turn it by Friday for that, and then get Jessica Pratt some direction to. Move this process forward anyway.
So that needs to go. Like, a, that'll, that'll go to A O C and then A O C will kind of work on it?
They're gonna work on everything. Another meeting next week for the summit, Sunday meeting next week, and I'll go there.
Okay.
Well, I'll be next week, they put out a doodle deal to figure out, I've got, actually got a commitment next Thursday and Friday, and I cannot be there in those two days, but. I'm hoping I'll move it to either the sixteenth or the twentieth, so we can. Build there, there was, it sounded like there's gonna be a lot of conflict for next Friday anyway, so hopefully they'll move, and then we can. Like I say, this process, because it's Clacken, Clackenous County and Commissioner West, who is a nurse, and in the middle of this mess, has some. Ideas on how he thinks this works. And uh, I have some holes in his ideas, but it's really a pretty good plan in general, so. Yeah, it's gonna be a process, and I think critical to Oregon, because. My view of this is, we have. Created a system to expand a problem, and we're trying to fix that problem. In a way that won't fix it, instead of trying to do prevention to keep the problem from happening.
Mm-hmm.
And it's a mess. And there's just a lot of side on the, you know, a lot of interest on the other side, that they wanna tie it so hard to home, I don't think we have as big a homeless, this problem as we do an addiction problem. Because those that are addicted don't own a house anymore.
Mm-hmm.
And there's anybody that owns a house wants to rent a house.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. Really getting down to the nuts and bolts of addiction and what's causing it, and, I mean, you got the whole conservative side, what to put on there, on the border. And then you have the compassionate. Um. People in Oregon that think you can't punish people, it's already kicked down, can't kick them anymore when they're already down.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's just completely not compassionate to let people die on the streets of Long, Long County.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's a mess, anyway. There's my speech on that.
Lots going on. Well, and so I think we can follow up and maybe send an email to Cara, probably Kimberly Lindsay, um.
I, if I could get some stuff, we need to get some stuff to Jessica Pratt, I think it's important we get her signed proclamation.
Yep, we can do that.
To Jessica, and I asked the sheriff's department, and I asked Tina if they could write a, you know, at least a statement on what. Measure one, what they say, and we're really insulated from the real problem, we really, I mean, I think we can say meth usage increases, we probably got some pentile in town, we haven't lost any lives yet. Um, there's the host outside issues that.
Mm-hmm.
That um come in, but the answer to this is not to. Have somebody go into overdose, give them Narcan. Get back to using again, have them overdose.
Just do the cycle, yeah.
And continue that cycle, we gotta, oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, there's just a lot of talk, that's, you know, that's like, that's the miracle answer to all this, so that's not the answer. Yeah, and so DA, sheriff's department, corrections, public. Health, or mental health.
Mm-hmm.
And our proclamation would be the five things I think we need to get to Jessica.
We're gonna work on that. Delaney's literally sending things as we speak?
Hmm.
Delaney's literally sending it as we speak?
She will appreciate the information.
Uh, got anything else? Not that that was a small thing. Sounds like you were busy.
Busy and stay busy.
If we back up to the road advisory, I attended that, and the C A P. Committee was supposed to go.
And then show up.
And show up, and I looked around the room, and I was actually the only one there, except for uh Dewey.
Which was kind of interesting, because one of the members of the road committee is also on the C A P committee, and they didn't show up.
Yeah, so um Jones, he didn't show up. But then. Frank said that something about reporting to the county court, we used to learn when he was talking about that, but. Hey, has he reached out to get on the agenda with, with, so.
Yeah, they wanna have more, they wanna have more direct from the county court and get. A better line of communications on that they're an effective organization, you're saying?
Yeah, so I think that, um, yeah.
Input is going somewhere, being something.
Mm-hmm. So they did talk about the, the railroad bypass road that I don't think there was, I didn't really get the base.
They didn't get anywhere, but there's a lot of support for it on the road advisory.
Yeah.
So.
So, that's, I attended those meetings.
Is the, one second, is the C A P scheduled to come see us on, you know, the eighteenth?
Well, what's the suggestion was, rather than come to the court, was to go to the road advisory.
Well, that's.
And then the road advisory come to the.
Yeah, because I think originally they had wanted to come directly to us, Miranda had relayed that, and I said, I don't really, we have a road advisory committee, I don't, for something that important, I don't want them to be left out of. The conversation, so.
I think we'll probably see something from them in the next couple of days, that they still want to attend.
Got it.
They really need to go.
Literally, I.
They really need to go see the road advisory committee first.
And Dewey, and Dewey was the one that brought it up, so.
So are you guys comfortable if the C A P does reach out for us to say, we would like you to go talk to the road advisory committee first? Get a recommendation on that together, if it's, if they're in agreement, they can come collectively to us, but I just don't. I don't want volunteers on the road advisory committee to wonder why they're volunteering if they don't get to have input on an important. Road project, so. Okay, just wanted to make sure it wasn't overstepping. What else you got going on?
So, and I attended the C A P co-meeting over Zoom. Which, then I didn't get the lunch. But I didn't have to drive car to that often either. And we weren't able to go, we didn't go to Pat's SIP presentation, and we didn't get to go to A O C. Because we were busy with the um onsite, the O dot onsite review. Um, we started on Wednesday at nine o'clock. Finished at about four, and then the next day we were finished by one, before one, so, and it, it went well, I thought. Um. They were supposed to send us, the, within forty-five days, they're supposed to have their report. Of their findings, and then have certain timelines after that, that we'll have to um fix certain things, but. There was kind of a list, that he sent that stuff to you that, okay, that we can fix ahead of, you know, like. Additions to our website. So, anyway, it went very well, I thought, and I learned a lot during it, so.
That's what, it was supposed to be a good learning session.
Yeah, they, they were, they were really good about not being hyper, pretty full, and more as a learning tool. That's what I got out of it. I don't. Rachel might have something to say about it, but she got zero good things on the financial thing, so, good job.
Yeah.
So, um.
Yeah, Leah, I feel like might be underselling this a little bit, because I just wanna say, like, this team, Miranda, Delaney, and Rachel. Have basically been preparing for this in addition to their regular duties, and there were some. I would say findings related to some paperwork related to maintenance that was already happening, it just, we need to tighten up the paperwork.
Yeah.
But the vast majority of things that came back were things like, you need this one line on your website, you need to have. Part of, part of the findings was that we currently don't have a dispatcher and, and director, which is being fixed as we, you know, like. So the feedback was that um it's being well-run, they have, they found no findings with the financial side, any of those, a lot of, um. And considering that, um. How much sort of people have been pitching in and just trying to keep transportation running, and people really kind of working outside of their normal lanes. To get this all done, I just wanna commend that team, the three of them, um, together with Leah, and then Cassandra, who's been manning the phones downstairs, just to keep the, literally keep the buses running. Um, I think is, like, that's a testament to their hard work and what they've been doing for the last couple of months, so, good job, guys.
Good job, everyone.
It's been a learning experience. I think, uh.
Isn't it nice to know you can still learn your age?
Yeah. That's a question.
I did, I did have a freight dispatcher, that's the freight broker, it's a little different putting loads of freight together than, you know, people.
Been the nicest part of it.
Freight that has the word dropping right on stage, people, they just wanna get to the dowels and irmaesten and. Putting them all, I, I just have to say, the interesting, we had a driver's meeting with the drivers. And it was educational on the thing where they would say, you know, you, you can't fit these two people together, or. So we need, we decided we needed an algorithm that shows us, oh, this person can't ride with this, and, but. The drivers, it was, it was a very good meeting with the drivers that we sat down. We're gonna try to have maybe monthly driver meetings to keep them. And David is, one of the drivers is stepping up, and he's looking at the snow tire situation, and so, they've been great.
And Leah or Miranda, do you guys just wanna briefly talk about where you are in the recruitment process for those positions as well?
We have five interviews, and we'll do three on Friday. And then we have another two that are set for Tuesday the eleventh, so. And most of them are for both, and one is only for one.
They're hard for one.
And then one for the other, yeah.
So three.
Yeah, so three applied for both, and then, yeah. So, um, so we have the interview team set up, and yeah. Hopefully we'll. Um, good candidates, I'm hoping that we can have somebody onboard and going um by the, in the. somebody onboard and going, um, by the end of October. And also Cassandra has agreed that she could potentially help as needed throughout the process. So.
To get more.
Yeah.
Up speed.
Yeah, he's stepped in, thank God. So. And then she's still dragging people around and.
It's been a team effort.
Yeah.
You guys have done a good job keeping the lights on and the bus is going. Um, anything else?
For me? I don't think so. I think that pretty much consumed my life. I'm, I've got, hey, no, I have to meet with Bailey in here in the, in October and we've got to start working on some of the quarterly reports for the public health. So, um, I got that coming up.
Lots going on?
Yep.
Um, so for me, wanted to flag that the nine one one board will be meeting next Tuesday at one o'clock. It's our monthly meeting. We are still trying to finalize the contract with the dispatchers. I'm hoping we'll have, um, a resolution on that soon. I think I mentioned last time that that's a stumbling block to recruitment for dispatchers because we haven't settled on what the wage, the salary schedule is going to be yet. Um, and so hopefully that moves along. Um, the frontier tellnet board, I think this is not confirmed, but I think is planning to meet on Wednesday, the eleventh, a week from today. Um, to take care of some housekeeping stuff. It by and large has been pretty quiet as of late. Um, and then also wanted to flag that the city of Condon's visioning process is continuing and their next meeting is on the ninth. Um, and I think that's pretty involved, but I can confirm that. Um, and they're inviting various community partners to start basically really thinking about all the various aspects of what a community is and what what they want Condon to look like. Uh, the.
What time is that on the night?
It is from four to seven. And I think it's at city hall, but I can confirm that. It might be at memorial hall actually. Um, because I think they needed a larger group. It is called Condon Can, which was actually Jed's, uh, brilliant name. Condon Can is the, and so the idea being like, which I think is kind of cool. So like Condon can build affordable housing. Condon can have, you know, a walkable community, all of those kinds of things. So, um, so if you see flyers, that's what that's for. It's the visioning pro, uh, process that the county provided some funding to the city to do. And it's really looking at long-term, five years, 10 years down the road, what do we want the community to look like? Um, so for those who are representing community partners, please be part of that process. And then at some point it will become a broader discussion with the public. So if you're interested in me and it's just Joe Citizen, um, please also be looking for information from the city about how to, how to provide input and get involved.
So if the can doesn't stand for something.
Nope.
Other than.
Just, just able to. The ability to. Um, okay, so I wanted to flag those. The other thing that I wanted to let you know is that the, remember several months ago, we were talking about funding a program for our nonprofits to be able to work with Kelly Consulting Company. Um, to basically do an assessment of their nonprofit, look for areas where they maybe could use some additional supports, whether it's policy development or board training or identifying funders or rent writing, any of those things. Um, it has not fallen off my radar. It's been sitting in my pending file and I finally, um, decided it was time to move on it. Um, so I, um, assuming you guys have no objections, Delaney and I are planning this afternoon to send out a letter from me, um, with a little sort of application-ish survey to those nonprofits. Basically just trying to get a headcount of who might be interested. And then based on what the response we hear back, um, then we would go back to Kelly nonprofit consulting, ask them to tighten up their proposal. And then we would bring it back to the court to see if we want to go forward based on how many people get to us and what we think the cost is going to be. I have, um, named it Grow Gillon County, which is grants resources for organizations. So grow, um.
Stands for something.
Yep, it does. That one does sound for something. So Grow Gillon County. And like I said, it's still a tentative program in the letter to them. It indicates it's a tentative program and we're just trying to get a headcount, um, to see who might be interested. And also to make clear that they understand that this is likely to be a three-year thing, that their board members are onboard for actually spending the time they're going to need to be spending with the consultants. So it's going to be more than just their probably regular board meetings. So. Anyways, we're planning on sending out that to anybody who the county's funded really in the last five years, um, who is a nonprofit status. One thing that came up when we talked before was what do we do with our municipalities, like our other taxing districts? So Delaney and I were looking at the special projects grant, a guideline language. And it appears that we were broad enough when we were creating the, what did we call it? The innovation?
The community innovation.
The community innovation grants that actually the municipalities could potentially just submit an application through that process. And then we could help them. There's a couple of different, like A O C is using a grant writer, um, Kelly Consulting could potentially do it, but then we would leave it up to the municipalities to decide when and if they have a project, they could just apply for the funding to, to then contract with a, a grant writer, um, making the assumption that probably their, their bylaws and things like that are probably where they need to be. Um, so does that sound workable?
No.
Okay. So once we hear back, I think we set the deadline of November second is when we're asking the nonprofits to get back to us. So I would expect this to be back on the agenda probably in December-ish. And once we have an opportunity to see a headcount and then talk to Kelly Consulting to get us a revised proposal. Um. What else was on my, was that it? Since I think there was one more. And nonprofits, oh, uh, the bid packet did go out. Jeff released it for the, um, renovations for courthouse. Uh, we are having a mandatory meeting tomorrow with potential bidders. So I will be there with Jeff. So we'll get a sense of how many contractors are potentially out there. We're still on track to have this likely be awarded by the courts, the first and only meeting in November, um, with construction to start probably late November, December.
So we got potentially four meetings left.
Yes. So, yes, because the unless, I mean, we can always call a special meeting in November if we need one. But the third, uh, weekend November, which is when we would be meeting is also the A O C annual conference move. Usually unless we have something pressing, we just go with the one meeting, which will be, I think, November first and then we'll meet again in December. Unless something comes up that's timed then for them, and then we can always just call it special. Special meeting.
Eleven eighteen. It does come on even if you're silent.
If you just, if you just swipe it, it'll go off. So the national alert system is working today. Good news.
Two minutes early even.
My slide. Um, let me.
The back of the line.
Oh, it's blast to the party. Um. I think that is it. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, it is eleven eighteen and I will adjourn the meeting.